Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning at our City Council Study Session. Oh, wait, Work Session, I forgot we changed the name of it. And so, we'll go ahead and get started. Ruth, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Tito?
Here.
Laura?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Manon?
Here.
Flah?
Here.
Thank you. We'll jump into Agenda Item Number Two as the Library Board update. Representatives from the Library Board will discuss the Board's goals and projects, as well as Council's policies and expectations.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is my voice carrying well enough without a mic? Okay, thank you. I am Sandra Shropshire. I'm the current Chair of the Library Board. I also hold a position at the ISU Library. Joining me is Erica Sees, who you probably know as the Director of Marshall Public Library. I'm happy to be here this morning to share with you some of the things the library's been up to in the past year. And I want to begin by acknowledging that libraries today are a combination of both services and collection. And they are the perfect combination of those things. And you see that well represented at Marshall Public Library. I prepared for you a report which you should have in front of you. Some highlights of the past year. You may know that the Friends Group has provided some new shelving. It's already been put in place and it looks great. I don't know if you've had a chance to go see it, but it looks very nice. The book sale was very successful, also supported by the Friends Group. This past fall, the library participated Welcome Back: Orange and Black, and passed out water and encouraged people to get a library card. They also conducted a toiletry drive and a food drive. Food for fines enabled folks to erase part of their library fines by bringing in food for the food bank. And that was a nice gesture towards the community. The mayor challenged the children of Pocatello to a million-minute marathon to see if they could read a million minutes. And the library facilitated that program. 611 children participated. I've put for you the details of how many minutes they logged in their reading. It's equivalent to in minutes, hours, and in days, 234 days. A tremendous thing.
Great thing.
Also benefiting children in the area was Marshall's and Portneffe District Libraries' joint effort to provide essentially a school library for the children at Fort Hall Elementary. As you may know, also, the library staff is working with a company to digitize back issues of the Idaho State Journal. This would be for the first time ever. And also, they're doing that with the cooperation of the journal itself. The summer reading program is a very important part of the library's work. I'm sure you all read or become familiar with the need for school students to retain their reading skills over the summer because they will actually step back if they don't retain their reading skills. I don't mean they'll step back a grade. I mean that they will not be able to retain their current reading level when they leave school in the spring. So, summer reading is very important to keep that level of interest up. And last summer, they reached 847 children with this program. This summer's is still underway, and we'll talk about that next year, I guess. And finally, some building or infrastructure changes that you all were a part of. The improved security system has been installed. You've also approved an improvement in the lighting system, which is underway, hasn't been completed yet, but it will result in a savings of both energy and cost and will pay for itself. How soon was it?
Very quickly. In fact, the original cost, when we looked at it the very first time, was about $110,000, and it was down to about $70,000. Right now, it's 49,000 with the rebate of $25,000 that we're going to get from Idaho Power. It'll be down to $25,000 total. Considering we were expecting to spend $110,000, $25,000 is marvelous. And it'll replace every light in the entire library. 400-plus lighting units with really high-efficiency LED lights. It's going to be done by STS Electric, and they have worked hand-in-hand with Idaho Power and will do so in this project. So, it's about to start.
The way that's been going, would it be a good idea to put it off a little while?
You know, a couple of years, it'll be $10 bucks.
Before long, they'll be paying us to put it in.
But anyway, we went through the process and they're going to be starting that very shortly.
What are the anticipated energy savings?
We're cutting it at least half. We had originally budgeted $20,000, I think, a year for electrical, and they anticipated that we might save close to $10,000 with electricity. So, it will pay for itself very, very quickly and then continue to provide really high-efficiency lighting and stronger lighting, better lighting. So, we're excited about it. And it's just as time has gone on, everything has gotten better and better and cheaper and cheaper. And so, we were able to come in at a great price. And then, half of that will be rebated back to us by Idaho Power. So, we're very, very happy about that.
I present to you also a few statistics that might further emphasize the volume of activity that goes on at this library. First of all, Marshall Public holds the most percentage of folks with a library card in the state in its category. And is 11 points above the next one down. So, this has been the case for several years.
It has.
This remains an impressive statement about the people of Pocatello and the library. Couple of other statistics that will show you why the folks there are always busy. Circulating 7,800-plus items in the previous year. That's all forms of items. At 344,000, almost 345,000 folks entered the building. Now, that's a visit, not... Some people can come 10 times and they'll each be counted as one. So, it's a busy place.
Yes.
You always have somebody there. That's incredible.
It's the parking lot. It's usually full.
Yeah.
I have other statistics for you. I won't read them detail by detail, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Going back to the digitization of our Idaho State Journal, I know the Idaho State Historical Society is digitizing many things. They've got a big grant. Are we duplicating any effort that might be being done there, or have you have any awareness of that, Eric?
No.
I... no.
There's no duplication.
No duplication.
We are working with... Essentially, we're getting a bit at a time as we can go, but we're really... We're the only people that have ever digitized the Idaho State Journal, and we don't cross at all with the Historical Society stuff.
Okay. The issues being digitized at present are early 20th century, very early, 1919.
While we can still keep those, while we still have access to those, and they're microfilmed, but microfilmed degrades too. So, we're trying to keep that from... The earliest stuff from being unavailable. And so, we've worked there. And we're not doing it all at once. I mean, that would be costly, but we're doing it as we can. And we've done a number of years, especially early on. It's been really valuable because we've already had people that have gone through looking for genealogical stuff or various other things that have been able to take advantage of the digital that we've gotten. It's been really nice.
Any other questions?
What happens to the hard copies after?
When we... Well, it's a combination of things. Some things we have on microfilm that's being... And we can continue to have the microfilm available. For current issues, we do send copies of the papers themselves to be digitized off of the print version versus the microfilm. So, we're doing some of the current stuff too. But mostly, we keep everything that's there. The paper, we don't keep because if they digitize the paper, then we're good. We haven't kept the paper for a very long time because we don't have any storage facility for it, and we get too bulky and too hard to maintain. So, we have sent those as well to be digitized.
Did you say when you foresee completing the project?
I don't offhand know the answer to that. Do you? I haven't seen it.
Not soon.
Yeah, it'll be a while.
Okay. It'll take a while.
It's just a few... It's a few years at a time each year. So, it's going to take a long time to catch up, but we're trying to make sure that we get the oldest, most fragile stuff first so that we can not lose those.
Great.
Any other questions? You're busy at the library. It's a great place. So, thank you very much for everything you do.
You're very welcome. Happy to be there.
Thank you. We will move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Human Relations Advisory Commission update. Representatives from the Human Relations Library Committee will discuss the commission's goals and projects, as well as council's policies and expectations.
Sorry. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jamar Brown. I'm here to represent the Human Relations Advisory Committee for the city of Pocatello. I have with me today Laura Judkins. She is our city liaison, and I want to thank her for taking the time every month to sit with us and put in with us. This is Gloria Mayer. She is also on the committee and well-known to this council. To start, the mission of the city of Pocatello Human Relations Advisory Committee is to advocate human and civil rights for all residents, facilitate the prevention and elimination of discrimination, and promote harmony by fostering peaceful relationships to ensure all people are regarded and treated with dignity and respect. The one thing that we do do is we give a Human and Civil Rights Award annually. And this past year, our award winner was Betty Moore. Betty has, just to be brief, she was nominated by the Hope and Recovery Resource Center here in Pocatello. And she has also been awarded the first annual Recovery Community Partner Award for outstanding service by the Hope and Recovery Resource Center. This award was established to recognize individuals in the Pocatello community who have been effective leaders in areas of behavioral health and substance abuse treatment and policy. I think mental health issues, as you are aware, have kind of come to the forefront nationally, and of course, that affects our community as well. And substance abuse falls into this category, as does PTSD with some of our veterans. And so, she's done a lot for the community, and I really want to recognize her service here today as well. Generally speaking, we come here every year. The purpose is to talk about how we can better our community. And we talk about what the committee has done in the past and kind of what our goals are for the future. I have kind of a written script that I read every year that's presented by the committee. Today, I kind of want to go off-script. Don't be scared. And address the real issue. How do we build a better community? Now, I can sit here and I can tell you all the statistics, and I can bring the data because I love data. If you're going to debate, bring the data. That's kind of my motto. And so, we talk about data, and we talk about all of these other things. And then, we go back to our committee meetings and we talk about other things. So, what can we really do as a committee, as a city council, to better our community? So, I have a friend, to quote her, that she said this past year, and she was speaking politically, "Has been a crazy pants year." Well, I've had a crazy pants year myself, and it has taught me a lot. And that's kind of what I want to share with you because we're all going to the same place. So, to build a better community, we need to build better neighborhoods. Well, how do we build better neighborhoods? We become better neighbors. So, I want to talk a little bit about my neighborhood because I'm very fortunate to live in a neighborhood where I love my neighbors. Any one of you who have ever had a bad neighbor knows what that's like. I mean, it can make your existence miserable. And I love my neighbors and I love my neighborhood. And so, not to speak of myself, but to talk a little bit about my neighborhood because I think they're a great example. So, I want to talk first about my neighbors, Andy and Julie Thomas. Andy is well-known in law enforcement in this community, very well-respected. Julie is very well-known and respected in the nonprofit sector, which is where I like to live. And so, I want to tell you kind of a fun story about them and their contribution to our neighborhood because being in law enforcement, Andy does not miss much. So, my husband does a lot of research on the Internet, looking at different things. And he was looking at cars. I wasn't that worried about it. He does the research. I run the numbers. It works. Until they came to me and told me that he had bought a plane ticket to Los Angeles to look at a car, which makes absolutely no sense to me whatsoever because we have cars in Idaho. So, we fly to Los Angeles. We drove to Salt Lake first, flew to Los Angeles. We go look at this car. We went to test-drive it. Private owner. The minute he put the top down, I knew I was done for. So, I'm like, "Rapid up. Let's go. It's a done deal." So, we drive back to Salt Lake, and now he has this dilemma. We have two vehicles at the Salt Lake Airport, and he wants to drive them both, which is not going to work. So, he's trying to decide, "Do I let her drive the car that I just bought? Or do I let her drive my beloved truck, which is technically newer than the car?" So, he decided I'd be more comfortable in the car. So, I get in this car, which I haven't driven as of yet, and you know, she's kind of zippy. So, I'm driving on the interstate, and I'm thinking, "This is actually a little bit of fun." So, I get home before he does because he's in the truck. And I pull into the cul-de-sac, and there's Andy and Julie sitting out talking to other neighbors. And I think to myself, "Oh, this is going to be good. This is going to be really good." So, I pull into my driveway in this zippy little car with California license plates. And I did not pull into the garage. I'm looking in my rear-view mirror, and I can see Andy out at the mailbox pretending to get his mail. Doing this. And he's just checking it out, and I'm laughing because first of all, he doesn't have a key. Second of all, it's a Sunday, so we don't have mail. And it was just so amusing to me. And so, I jumped out of the car, identified myself, and then, of course, Steve got home, and they all went, looked at the car. I went and unpacked. But the point being, how fantastic is it to have a neighbor that I know if some car pulls into my driveway, or if something looks maybe off, a little off in my neighborhood, he's going to notice. And that's such a great feeling to have. And also, the Thomases came through again for me when I was having medical treatment, and I was kind of having a Wizard of Oz moment. You know, the ones where you think your house is flying away? And they made the phone call to my husband, the original Steve Brown, and said, "Are you aware that your wife has seen flying monkeys?" And he was like, "Okay, I'll be home in a minute." So, anyway, same thing, you know? It's not just about loving your neighbor in the general sense. It's about caring about your neighbor. It's about looking after your neighbor. It's about making the phone call if a phone call needs to be made. And I'm so grateful to have them as neighbors. Another thing that we do in our neighborhood is the block party. And that's been a really effective way for us to communicate with each other. And what better way to prevent discrimination and prejudice than to get to know your neighbor? To find out who this person is, to find out about their culture, their creed, their religion, their race, food items. You know, all of these things that are so important to building a community. This is a great way to do it. A few years ago, we had a block party for a young man, a neighbor who had just gotten back from service in Iraq. And we had a Welcome Back from Iraq block party. And not only did he have his entire family and friends there, our entire cul-de-sac was there. We roasted the whole pig. We did the whole thing. And everybody attended. It was very well-attended. It was a lot of fun, and it really does build, you know, better communication with your neighbors. And we have continued to have block parties. And I know that the imposter Steve Brown, he on Independence Day himself has people over to the home to celebrate Independence Day, and it's very well-attended. And so, I was thinking about a few of these things. Mona Hearn having these fantastic dinners at her house where all sorts of people show up. So, what can we do as a committee to foster this? So, I decided maybe we need to be a little bit more goodwill-oriented, and maybe I need to be a little bit less Buffy, the Hate Crime Slayer, and kind of go out there and try to promote goodwill within the community. And this is one way I think that we can do that. I think that if we were to try to promote goodwill, promote the block party, promote trying to get, you know, to know your neighbor just a little bit better, then we can build better neighborhoods. And neighborhood by neighborhood, we will build a better community. And so, I guess that would be my message today, is to be a little bit proactive and try to go out and foster these relationships. I think another great thing, and I've talked to him about this before, would be to have our Chief of Police do a song and dance routine promoting, you know, goodwill. And so far, I'm getting nowhere, so if you guys could help me with that.
We should have him actually do it today, right now. Because the cameras are on.
We could have a chief-to-chief dance-off.
A chief-to-chief dance-off. We've got whole things here. That's a great idea.
I'm all for it.
That's a...
Go lip-syncing. It's got to be original. It's got to be the real deal.
So, what's interesting is Chief Marchand looked like he was ready to go. Chief Gates turned beet red.
So, anyway, so that's kind of my message. And I also want to acknowledge not just my neighbors, but the people on my committee. Gloria Meyer-Hare would be one of them, who checked in on me like every day. And those of you sitting in front of me, who checked with my husband to see how I was doing. And I want you to know how much I appreciate that. As I was telling Ruth earlier, I really thought I was going to have this procedure done. This is not the first procedure I've had, but hopefully the last. And no one would be the wiser. Right.
Draymond.
Draymond. Anyway, so that's my message today, as opposed to bringing the stats and the data. You know, those things are still out there. Those problems are still out there. You know, the suicide rate is still out there. Idaho is not faring well. There's a lot of statistics that are out there, and they're not good. Mental health is another issue. And yes, we do still get, you know, the discrimination and prejudice calls. But I really think that where we need to go, because it is a crazy pants world, and things have gotten a little ugly, that I think maybe what we should do as a committee is try to foster goodwill. And that's the direction... Not that it's my decision, but that's kind of the position where I think that we need to be. So, do anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
I'll just make one statement. Jamar, I really think there's a lot of good that's happening in our community.
Absolutely.
I don't know if it's your committee that's doing it, but I just see so many people who have different ways of life that have come together. I see more lockstep for goodness than I see those isolated negative things.
Well, and our committee's a good example of that because we are very diverse on our committee. And we've had a lot of different people from all sorts of walks of life. And it's really interesting to get to know these people.
Sure.
Because I think it's fascinating. And so, you know, the fact that we were all invited to the mosque, and the fact that, you know, we passed the non-discrimination ordinance, and all of these things. The international student situation, you know, which was unfortunate, which we tried to work on. And I think a lot of those relationships have gotten better as well. So, I agree with you, and I just kind of want to foster... That's kind of where I want to go with this. I want to foster that goodwill.
Do you think that there is sufficient communication between your committee and, say, the city council for moving these projects forward?
Well, yes, in the respect that... And this is a good opportunity to thank Council Member Laura. She is our liaison with the city council. Council Member Bray has been a former liaison, as has even I. And so, that's kind of the communication that we have to the city council. Of course, it can always improve. That relationship can always improve. And Laura here has been really great about that as well, you know, because she communicates anything we have with Ann. I want to give just a little bit of appreciation to Ann at this moment in time for being so patient with me these past few months, as I've been trying to get agendas out and so forth. And I also want to thank Logan because he's been really terrific, you know, when we have our award, you know, getting that out to the press and kind of getting some of these issues out there. And he's right on it every time. And he does a fantastic job, and I really want to thank him for his service there as well.
We do have reports. Our liaison, Linda, reports at least monthly in terms of what's going on with all of us with our responsibilities, but Linda's been very good letting us know.
Yes. She's fantastic.
I feel we're making some genuine progress.
I do too. I do too.
I think one of the things that we as members of the committee have to remind ourselves to come back to the committee and say, "Hey, this is what we've been doing as individual people on the committee." To give the committee, therefore Linda, therefore council, feedback. Jamar and I were talking about it. I have never gone through a summer like this one where there is so much going on every weekend in Old Town. It's just fantastic. You know, to live in a town as small as ours, and yet, every single weekend, not even counting the Wednesday business, there's always something going on. I think that's just fantastic. Plus, as I say, I told Jamar, next week I'll start being a guinea pig in a study at ISU for the effects of aging and memory. As you can tell, it's affecting mine. And we'll be able to give that as feedback of how it affects us. Again, that stuff...
I did that too.
It's a little premature to announce this, but we will be starting here in Pocatello a new chapter in the gay community of Sage, something that we don't have yet. And that's designed for the older members of our gay community. And let's face it, none of us is getting any younger. And I think if there was ever a representation of that, it was the fact that I was the keynote speaker this year. It's the first time we've ever had somebody over the age of 65 as a keynote speaker. We have a large segment of our gay population that has white hair like me, and they're hidden in the shadows. And we have to address that. That's an area that, as you say, is being pushed away. They're not the people who come out. And especially in situations where... And especially in situations where we have this severe heat, they're not always the ones that get a whole lot of attention. We have people like Virginia on our committee who's, if we gave her bio, we'd be here till next week. She's involved.
Virginia Kelly.
Yes. Is there somebody in Pocatello who doesn't know Virginia Kelly?
I pretty much refer to her as Pocatello's people's princess, because she does so much. In fact, she actually, I was convulsing, brought me a book, Smile at Fear.
She's just an amazing.
And she caught me at my very worst. There's only one other person in this room who has seen me look like that, and unfortunately, she sees me probably more than she chooses to look like that. But no, Virginia's been fantastic, and she's so passionate, and she's so devoted to this community, and she is the perfect example of somebody who has just that goodwill ambassador attribute. And she goes out in the community, it doesn't matter what the topic is, but she's passionate and she's devoted, and I just could not love her more for that.
And you can probably pick 10 people, and out of those 10, at least two have had her for a teacher at some point in their life. You know, and they all have fond recollections of Virginia. And those are the type of people who sit on the Human Relations Advisory Committee. We're blessed, we're really, really blessed. And I think it's, that is as important to the committee as anything else. It's what the committee, they bring to the committee that enables the committee to say, okay, what do we now do as individuals as much as a committee? Because when you only meet once a month, it's not just the jobs that the committee does, it's the jobs that the individuals do and the priorities that they have. We're individuals who each have our own interests, or if you're somebody like Virginia, we ought to nominate her for president. Really.
Anyway, does anybody else have any questions or comments?
What I was leading to ultimately, sometimes it seems to me that the agenda of the committee is not necessarily the same as the city councils. Are we communicating sufficiently that we can be working together better?
I think that we could definitely be working better together.
How can we do that?
Communicate more.
Yeah, just communicate more, I suppose.
It's all up to you, Linda.
And we do have a really good relationship, in my opinion, with the police department.
Oh, man, yeah.
They've always been really great. Well, you know, whenever I've contacted the chief with my obnoxious questions, or whatever the case may be, he always answers immediately, so that I can take that back to the committee. Because they always have questions, you know, what happened here, what are we going to do about this, what were the circumstances, do you have more information? Here again, do you have the data? Do you have the data to support this? Those types of things. So, but no, I definitely think we can improve communication. So we'll have a block party.
There you go.
I know the mayor likes barbecue, so.
Do lunch.
That's right.
Have coffee. As long as it never becomes an adversarial relationship. You know, we all live in the same place, we all have the same goals, and I think, you know, as long as we all remember, hey, that's what we're here for, is to make Pocatello the very best we can be. You know, it's not a us against them situation. We're partners in this. We're on this committee to do the very best we can for Pocatello, as are you.
And this is the point where I tell Gloria, thank you, dear.
You can see some, feel some passion there.
She has passion as well, but she can go on and on and on for the rest of the day.
I've never known that about Gloria.
But I do appreciate her being here with me. She always brings a lot to the table, as all of you know. And she was instrumental with our nondiscrimination ordinance, which was a good two and a half years of our life. And, but here again, you know, there are people on our committee that are very active in the NAACP and, you know, a lot of other organizations as well. And so I think that's what we bring together as a committee, is there so many of us that are involved in so many other things, that we're able to kind of bring that all together and project that out. So.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just one comment I wanted to make. I really do like the proactive approach of goodwill ambassadorship, I think is something that, I mean, that's where the committee can have a real impact in the community. And I support that approach, so.
Fantastic.
Thanks.
Good, good, good direction.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you for your time.
Absolutely. We'll move on to agenda item number four, proposed fiscal year 2018 budget amendments. Finance department staff will be present, detailed information, or will present detailed information on proposed fiscal year 2018 September budget amendments. The public hearing to review the proposed amendments will be held on September 6, 2018.
Good morning, Mayor and Council Ashley Welsh, interim CFO. We are going to go over budget amendments that are proposed for September. So this time we had 24 amendments that affected seven funds. Public hearing notice will be published in the Journal on the 22nd and the 29th of this month. We're doing the work session today. The public hearing will be September 6, and ordinance consideration will also be after the public hearing that night. So we'll start with general fund amendments. We had a total of $971,714 in the general fund. Mayor and council, we had some AIC conference registrations for youth members. That was covered by Youth Forum money, and we also received a refund for one of the youth that wasn't able to go. And then we also had the Youth Advisory Council urine barbecue, which was also covered by Youth Forum money. The police department received a grant for high intensity drug trafficking area for $10,000, so we're going to use that for overtime. Child safety seats purchases, we received a grant from the state of Idaho for $9,894. And then there was a copier buyout of $3,085. We got money from them to buy out the lease. And we received money from the state of Idaho for a detective to attend fire essentials Fire department, we have deployment of personnel to assist with fires for $500,000, yeah, $500,000. So basically, if we get asked as a department to go out, we are fully reimbursed by the state for the time of the firefighters that go out, plus the backfill to fill while they are gone. And so this will just be put in the budget, but we're not actually going, we're going to hold it back until it's used. So it's not going to cushion it or anything, we're just giving it in case we get asked for help, so that we can help other agencies with any fire needs that they have. So that's what that is for. It is fully reimbursed. We actually, if we send out equipment with it, we get additional funding over and above, so we could actually have a little bit of extra come in on that. But that's just to cover the employees' time to go out on those fires. We received a grant from Allstate, so $500 was going to be used for overtime for public education disaster preparedness, $4,700 for fire prevention supplies, and $4,500 for equipment for public education events, and $500 for professional electrical work for storage consolidation, and that's all paid for by a grant. Animal services needed some repairs, so they're, you know, for $587. They have received excess donations for the year, so that's what's going to pay for that. And they also received donations for travel and registration expenses for the Best Friends Conference, that was $3,121. The Parks Department, we have the construction of the Greenway Trail section from Farm Bureau to Montavista. I'm sure everyone's seen that construction happening. That is reimbursed by ITD, and then the match came from the Port of Greenway Foundation, so there's no cost to the city. We just need to put it in the budget so we can spend it. It's $433,134. So other fund amendments totaled $167,491. We had the street fund, there's some repairs that need done on the South Valley Road, there's been some settling out there. The repairs are going to cost approximately $100,000, probably not more than that, we're going to use reserves to fix the road. Science and Environment, I know that you've already seen this, when the Utah State University worked on the Port of River project, I think it was approved last year to use reserves for that, $19,429. And then the Water Fund received money from ICRAP. They had a ATV with a plow attachment stolen out at their facility, so they, this is the cost that is going to cover part of the replacement of that. And then Utility Billing Fund had an unplanned retirement, $21,125, and you can see below, the Retirement Savings Fund had additional money set aside already for that retirement, so we're just going to plan for it for fiscal year 18 instead of for fiscal year 19, so we just need to amend for that. And then the Police Grant Fund received an additional $1,186 from the Bird Grant, so we're purchasing light bars for police cars with that money. So here's just a review of the totals by fund. General Fund was $971,714, Street Fund, $100,000, Science and Environment, $19,429, Water Fund, $4,626, Utility Billing, $21,125, Police Grant Fund, $1,186, and the Retirement Payout Fund, $21,125. So the total budget amendments for September are $1,139,205. So we're not going to take action following the public hearing, it'll be at the same meeting, but it'll be later during the ordinance section of that meeting on the 6th. Are there any questions on any of those amendments? Want me to go over anything else on it?
Just want to be clear on the Fire Department, $500,000, we're holding that back, we'll use it after, I mean, we'll use the money, but it will be transferred soon as we have the reimbursements and stuff.
Right, so the budget authority is only for those reimbursable calls that they go out on.
Do we have any reimbursable expenses at this point?
No.
No.
So we're going to move the money into the September budget, only for the month of September then, because the new budget year starts in October?
Or potentially any that go out this month as well.
We've been called out, we were asked to go out, and then the state declined, and so had we not, had we had this money, it would have been okay. Had we not, then we'd be talking about a whole different budget amendment of making sure we get it put in there immediately, so it's there, and so it's something that Chief Gates has talked about for a couple of years, I believe, and it's just a matter of time getting it done.
It seems late in the fire year, that budget year to be doing.
This is when the fires happen, though, this is when they're there, everything's dry now.
And the $500,000 is worst-case scenario. We figured, I think it was 14 days on average that they're called out, and so we were just figuring worst-case scenario, in case it happened. We're doubting that that is actually going to be used.
Chief Gates, Pocatello Fire, thanks. Yeah, so as you say, it is late in the fire season. Unfortunately, a lot of times that's when it does occur, and this was really a contingency from the perspective of, if we're asked to deploy, we were running the numbers for this last deployment that they asked for, it was going to be about $120,000 in overtime. I certainly don't have that in my budget to send somebody if this amendment weren't there. It's all contingent on, we know that the state will reimburse, as Ashley said, and actually, we can actually make some money on this, because we can actually rent the fire vehicles that we send them, and we can actually bring back money to the tune of somewhere between $30,000 and $50,000 a deployment, which is, helps out in our capital asset problem. I think this is going to be something that we'd really like to have kind of as a standing amendment, so that, you know, it's kind of always there, available. It's kind of a contingency, it's not something that I'm going to dip into, it would literally be, the amendment is there already in place, so that we don't have to worry about some late-season amendment. And then I basically show an invoice that says, here's how much we're invoicing the state of Idaho for these things, and then we shift the money into the budget, knowing that we're going to get reimbursed for that amount of money. So, it's not gonna, I'm not going to touch this money without us actually deploying anybody.
And we put these numbers together a few weeks ago when we were, there was the potential to be called out.
Yeah, we had, we had a strong, and I'm actually surprised that we haven't been asked again. Other than our own backyard is burning, and as we always say, it's our Pocatello first, Idaho second, and then the rest of the nation third. So, you know, we have to make sure that we're protecting in that order of preference, and right now Idaho is burning pretty well, so most of the departments in the state are really nervous about sending resources somewhere else. But, you know, we all have a little bit of extra, and we can send somebody, so.
Chief Gates, just for clarification, for example, with the Charlotte fire, we had lots of people come to.
Correct, and that's kind of the premise, is that we gained assistance, and I've told the mayor this, that, you know, if we want to, we never, we don't staff for the catastrophic event, that what California is experiencing and what some of the western part of the state are experiencing. We don't staff for that. We staff for the everyday, the 95% experience. But when that catastrophic or that 5% occurs, we want to have assets available, resources available, to come assist us, as in the Charlotte fire we did. We had people from all over the state come help us. And had the state been tapped out, had that been later in the fire season, because that was a June fire, had that been in September, we probably would have been doing exactly the same thing, reaching out to Montana, Utah, Wyoming, California, to get resources to come in and assist us. And so we want to play in that realm reasonably and provide services when we can. So it's really critical that we, I think, play.
The state rode the check to income and other places. It wasn't Pocatello that ruled the check.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on any other amendments? They're pretty small this time. Okay.
Thank you. Then we will move on to agenda item number five, fiscal year 2019 budget discussion. Finance department staff will present Bannock County property valuation amounts and the overall effect of the proposed property tax and levy rate for fiscal year 2019, and review public comments received at the August 2, 2018 budget hearing.
Okay. So this presentation, just going to go over the property tax evaluation that we received from Bannock County. I kind of had mentioned it last week, but I'm going to go into a little bit more detail. We're going to go over the effect of the levy rate and how the tax affects to homeowners. And then we're just going to go over the budget overview. I'm basically just going to go over some of the things that we were able to add in this year's budget. So we received the total estimated property value for tax year 2018, which is our fiscal year 2019. It's about $2.5 billion, which is up about $50 million from the last, from the previous tax year. We had new construction of 24 million, a little over 24 million, and when we were doing our estimates, we estimated that 24 million, so we got an additional $257,000, which wasn't a huge increase in that tax amount, but it amounts to $273,670 in additional tax. And then we also received the annexation value for tax year 2018, $316,132, which is about an additional $3,500 in tax. So due to the valuations coming in strong, the FY 2019 levy rate is only going to increase by 1.67%. The CPI for the year was 2.041%, so we are under CPI. We always recommend kind of staying around that, just to keep up with service. So all tax funds are under their statutory limit for their tax rates, as set by the state. The general fund is now at a .00836, and the levy limitation for that is .009. So last year we were at .00876. So with some of the movements that we were able to do, mostly with the $1 million into the capital fund instead of in the general fund for capital contingency, we were able to lower that levy rate, so that we're closer, not as close to the limit as we were, which gives us a little bit more room. So I'm just going to give you guys an example of, the median house value that we, that I pulled off from census reports was $133,700. This is just the Pocatello levy rate. Remember, when you do pay your taxes, it's based on a district as a whole, so you're going to have Bannock County in there, you're going to have the ambulance district, a few other things. So this is just Pocatello's rate that we're going over. So you can see the levy rates, it goes up to .01154. Homeowners exemption, most people get the homeowners exemption, which is 50% of your value, up to $100,000. So the taxable value in this example is $66,850, and you can see that the annual increase is about $11.37, and that's annually. So by us taking the additional money, it's costing the average about $11 a year. So I'm just going to go over some of the items that we were able to add to the budget. I kind of put them in categories of general operating and capital, personnel, and then capital plan expenses. Some of the revenue sources that we had, we were able to increase some fee income, mostly, I guess the airport would be the big one, since Mostly, I guess the airport would be the big one since we were able to add additional flights. We were able to put additional income into the budget, which helped cover a lot of their expenses. We do have interfund charges. Some of these we are using reserves for. Most of them are using property taxes. And then I think we have donations for one or two of these. So I'm not going to go over everything. These are just the departments that had general operating or capital needs that we were able to add to the budget this year. Some of the bigger ones, we were able to add the forty-five thousand for economic development so that a person could have an operating budget. And then police was sixty thousand. But all of these are things that departments need to basically just keep up with the status quo. These aren't really adding any services. And we were able to do that mostly through property taxes. Liability insurance, we had an increase in the claim or the premium. So that's coming from property taxes and interfund charges. Street is property taxes. Airport's one of the bigger ones. We were able to use additional fee income, reserves, and property taxes for that. I put ambulance in here. Ambulance is paid for by Bannock County, so technically it doesn't affect our budget, but it does affect the overall taxpayer because it is part of their tax bill. We were able to add some much-needed operating and capital. We were able to add to IT, utility billings using reserves, public works, and workers' compensation. So this is the big one, the personnel. We were able to add, this is a really big list, that we were able to add for personnel for 2019. And most of these are going to be paid for through property taxes, as you can see. We were able to add the two police officers, the two firefighters, some support, police support, some part-time in parks and recreation, part-time positions. We were able to add an operations specialist to the airport, which has been needed for a few years now. So that's a big one for them. It is paid for partially by the increase in fees and then partially by an increase in tax. Ambulance was able to get a firefighter also, again, that's Bannock County. And then public works was able to get an executive assistant. And then some of the things that we added to the capital plan, which we haven't really been able to do in the past. We are doing the Ross Park pole resurfacing, which is going to be probably a couple-year project. We're going to do little pieces at a time. That's a hundred and fifteen thousand for FY nineteen. Science and Environment's going to start on the Rainy Centennial Park. That was just donations of a hundred thousand. And then sanitation was going to build the lean-tos to protect the trucks out there, and that's use of reserves. That was just kind of a quick overview of kind of what we had for the year. So I'm just looking for any questions or any guidance on how you want me to proceed with the ordinance and the fee resolution, if there's any questions on fees also.
I have a couple of questions. When we rolled with the maximum, we said we would come back and address it after we saw the property tax value. Our property. I really do not like the levy going up more. I think it's just up and up and up. And I think we need to work at flattening it. So what would it cost us out of our budget if we just maintained the levy rate of last year instead of increasing the levy rate? So instead of going up, we just at least try to stay level.
So here's, you guys all have this sheet. It's kind of hard to see up here because I can't show the whole thing. So if we were to keep... Let's just see. Sorry, I'm trying to make sure where I'm at. Okay.
I tried to do that, but you had it saved to where I couldn't enter it.
Oh, I did? I'm sorry. So it's going to be less than a million. I'm just going to plug in numbers because I'm not... So about half a million would put us right around flat.
And part of my thinking of this is, I really feel like we need to keep some gunpowder on the shelf and not use it all. I know next year the Fire Department is going to be back in with the big ask in terms of personnel. I don't have any idea what that will be, but we've had a four-year contract and it's been a fairly static contract. And I just think we need to anticipate that a little bit. And if we use everything up this year, we still have, what, one-point-three-three below our maximum. But I just think that the city's going to have needs. We need to anticipate budgetarily. And I really do think that we should have a target of a one percent levy. That should be what we work towards.
Well, I have a question. Where would you suggest then that we would cut? Because I think we could take off every position that was needed and added and...
Well, but that's the trouble with doing the budget the way we do it. We just throw in like income is unlimited, and then we have the expenses already there.
But specifically, do you have an idea of where you're...
Well, since we didn't get this in advance, the, what we had decided, I think we need to go pare back. We need to reconsider where we put our money in the expense side, try to get back to that five hundred thousand dollars not being spent.
So what we added, we added five hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-one. That would be all the positions plus a few operating expenses in there. So just so you guys are aware, everything that we, all those positions and those few operating is five eighty-seven.
So that's my question for Councilwoman Bray. Is that what you're suggesting? Are you suggesting it from somewhere else?
Well, we can't, you know, the city is theoretically poised for growth. But numerically, our growth has been very sluggish. We're not just exploding like other places. We kept going to the taxpayers. If I go back to 2015, that should have been the fix on the pilot program. Anything we've done since then, it doesn't look like it's a big increase there, but it is. I plugged in 2015, what was budgeted that year into the inflation calculator and found that inflation was six-point-three percent over that span, you know, from one budget to the 2008 through eighteen. And it looks to me like we're expending more than what inflation is, even though it doesn't look like it in the bottom numbers there. When you plug it into an inflation calculator, it comes out that way. And we've got people in our community who are on minimum wage. And when you talk about eleven bucks, if they get a five cent an hour increase, which a lot of them don't, that's a huge increase for them in terms of taxes. And I know there's some discussion about whether it's passed on to people who are renters. But my experience has been that most people who are renting have to pay that tax eventually.
Well, I hear what you're saying about the eleven dollars, but I think those same people are the people that are calling our dispatch and they expect a police officer or a paramedic to show up when they have an emergency. And so that's why I'm asking, like, where would you suggest? Because I can't feel great about saying we've got increased, you know, call volumes and we're just not going to address that.
That's the problem with our budget process, is we go through weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks of constructing expenses. And now then we've spent, what, two weeks or less on the income side, being able to readdress expenses? And we really haven't spent any real detailed study session looking at expenses versus the real income we know.
Well, you're asking us to change the budget process. You don't have expenses until, what, July one?
So we don't get these valuation numbers. We're not required to get them till the beginning of August.
I know, but we immediately plugged in a three percent increase. We immediately did that in our study session. We didn't say no. We plugged it in. And now this is the first chance we get, knowing what the valuations are, to really dig in and see what our expenses should be against our income as we know it now. I don't know a person who doesn't adjust their expenses relative to their income if they have a working budget.
You need to talk to my wife.
If I do, she'll be mad at you.
She is all the time.
The whole point of the tax solution was, we did the three percent and we went through it as if everyone would be comfortable if it was a three percent increase. Because when we went through that, we all knew that, hey, this is taking three percent. Your levy rate could go up by three percent.
I know, and I was very reticent to do it with the promise that this was just plugging in something. It wasn't written in stone. This was malleable. It would be worked on and could be reduced if we wanted to reduce it.
And that's why we're here today, is to look at that, to see if there's anything that we want to take out.
But I don't have, I don't have on my stuff here, any way of going through and looking at what I would project as reductions. We went through it fast, what all this stuff worked. But I don't have that on my element here. I don't have it in a paperwork. And it's real hard to go through it like this. To me, we ought to be able to study our expenses against our income.
Is that what you're talking about right there?
Yeah, I would have been, I would have welcomed having that.
Well, I think those things that we have added in are essential because of what we had done in the past in terms of restricting our departments. I think we're just doing this as a recovery effort.
I just know that we pay taxes higher than in major cities in the whole state of Idaho.
Yeah, and there's some real reasons for that, but I think we supply.
Well, we can have reasons or excuses. To me, the reasons are that we put forth budgets that put that levy rate out there. That's the real reason, bottom line.
Well, the real reason is how many tax-exempt properties there are. You have, and this is a wild number, so nobody run to the bank with it. You know, and I'm not even going to put it out there. I'm not even going to say it. But we have a major, major portion of our community and property that does not pay taxes.
Lewiston doesn't, Moscow doesn't.
No, 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 not in comparison, not in comparison to Pocatello and Lewiston, and not in comparison to Pocatello and Boise, or Pocatello or Meridian, or any of those. There is a major portion of our community that does not. We tried to, I asked the county commission what that looked like and stuff. They are not sure what it is. You can look and kind of guess, but there's a major portion. You have a few properties that are paying the bill on this, where other communities have a lot more.
And we also have, when I talked to Christie at the county, we also have a lower commercial base than most cities also. So it unfortunately falls on the taxpayers in the residential just because of how Pocatello is set up.
And if I were commercial, would I want to move to Pocatello knowing I could get a lower tax somewhere else? If I was bringing a fifteen-million-dollar factory into Pocatello, or a hundred-million-dollar, and I look at the differentiation at the levy rate in another community versus here, and I say I could hire one or two more people versus paying taxes, I would probably go hire one or two more people.
We just had a hundred-million-dollar corporation, put Amy's Kitchen, and then add a medical thing for it. So to answer your question, I think that, yeah, you would look at Pocatello and be here. You had Great Western Malting add a hundred-million dollars.
Which you're looking at the abatements, which drive up the taxes that are pushed on everybody else. Those abatements that were given to Amy's Kitchen, to Great Western Malting are driving the higher tax rates.
These are catch-up things. This is what you're trying to say.
But I would agree, these are indeed catch-up things. We've needed more firefighters. We've needed more police officers. We've needed a steno for years, from the, you know, for eight years, ten years, fifteen years, I think they've needed stenos, you know, dispatch. I would agree that you're looking at, we have spent the last few years catching up, but I think this is still part of it. Personally, that's me.
I look at what other cities did when they were hit with financial crises. They really cut back big time. We didn't ever have to do that because we had other things going here that took us through the biggest part of the financial crisis. When we were hit with the pilot program, there were some cutbacks, but I don't think you see a lot of that evidenced in the growth of our budget. If you look at from, we've gone from, in 2008, from a nineteen-million tax fund group to twenty-nine million, that's half again. Two thousand eight was...
Which is interesting, when in 2008, we were taking four million dollars of pilot money that was not...
That was not, that was just four million. It was more at two-point-three.
I think it got up to four million.
It was four million through 2007, eight, nine. It was four million, and then in ten, it started to drop back down a little bit. And we whittled it down to about two-point-three when the lawsuit had been decided. And so we were taking four million extra dollars. And so if you add four million dollars to the 2008 budget of taxes that you, that we were taking, that were hidden and using for general funds, what does that do to this number right here?
Well, but you got, if you're going to compare apples to apples, you got to include the fireman retirement fund that we gained back. You got to include some of the capitalization we got back from some insurance policies. You got to include the different retirement districts. All that's part of this too.
Absolutely. I would not argue any of that. I would not argue any of that. But you're just looking at general, generally across the board, prices have increased. Look at just health insurance alone, what's happened with that.
I understand.
So when you, when you look at a 2008 budget and you're not completely clear and transparent with an extra four million dollars you're using, and it may have been three-point-eight million, but it was right around four million dollars. And then you want to compare it to 2019, after having to dig our way out of a hole, that's not an apples-to-apples comparison.
Well, just go back and look before pilot came in. What was our levy rate before pilot came in? I do not believe it ranged this high.
Well, I don't know the answer to that.
Before pilot was ever in there.
I don't know the answer to that, so...
You know, I mean, if we're going to look at historical, what, let's just take pilot out. Just go back and at least address the historical record that Pocatello had before pilot, take it out of the discussion. But I'm not comfortable with this. And I think we're supposed to do the heavy lifting, and I think we've done some of that. I think we've got some other things that are potential cost savings in there. I think we've worked and we've got some real good aspects in our budget. But I also think that we need to look and say, how do we prepare for the future? And how do we, because every one of these people we add this year will be somebody we're paying next year. And we've got personnel issues coming up, and we've got Fire Department to address.
So with personnel issues coming up, and we know we're having those come up, why would you not start fixing that issue today? Why wait until tomorrow so that you can throw everything you possibly can and then cut budgets so that you can take care of what we need to do?
Well, I think, my feeling is next year, when you've got employees that are on the hook to deserve pay raises, like the Fire Department, they've had a four-year contract. I have no idea what the proposed would be, but I'm going to say it's going to be in four to six percent, just a guess, because of what we've done over four years and frozen them. I think they got a one percent one time. Is that right?
They have a one percent for fiscal nineteen.
Okay. So we've got, we've got to address that because we've done some other increases in other areas. Our employees are our most valuable resource. And we've got a bunch of them with Police Department and Fire Department. And whenever we do something with Fire Department, we seem to have to do it with Police Department too.
See, and I agree, employees are our number-one resource and our best asset that we have. So... So I believe we should be taking care of them, and right now, we have people that are working more than they've ever worked before, and they're being with less than they've ever had before. So we're asking them, they're getting a double whammy here. I think every employee in the city deserves an increase, and every employee in the city is getting a minimal increase. We talk about a 1%. There's a number of employees that haven't seen 1% over the last couple of years either. It's not just the fire department.
I know.
I mean, we made some adjustments with their pay and stuff, but...
Most, most people that I know, when they look at lightening their load or getting paid for their load, they're just getting paid for their load.
Well, I guess the one thing we have to remember is you can only take so much each year. So let's say next year, you take care of pay, that might take your whole new, that might take all your 3%, and that's all you can do next year. I mean, we do have foregone that we can go into, but it's, I mean, if we take everything next year, our levy rate could increase by 5% to 6%. So, I mean, it just...
Max moves 3.
Well, no, because we can take foregone. Yeah. So, I mean, we just have to look at, do we want to try to take it in little pieces? Or do we want to take it all at once, I guess? Something to think about.
See, and we, and you're right, we put this in saying, all right, 3%, we'll have the discussion. It's not 3%, though, it's a 1.6%. And that's something we did not know, it's a 1.6%, it's not 3%.
And that's less than CPI, so I was feeling pretty good about that percentage personally, but I don't want you to feel uncomfortable with the process or with it. So I guess we've got the positions up there. I'm looking down through them again. I don't really see one that's jumping out at me that I want to ax right now. I don't know if you do, but I don't, and I don't know if you have some other idea of somewhere else, maybe that you were, you're wanting us to come up with that $500,000 from, or look into or future.
Well, that's showing 587,000. When I look at our, our fund increase with the amount levied, I see 1.29.
To stay the same, those 587,000.
If you just did the calculation if we wanted it to...
Or 500...
If you want to keep the levy rate flat, we need to cut about 500,000.
Yeah, but I'm saying that we, what we've increased in our levied amount is we've gone from a 28 million, 576, 621, to a 29, 785, 570.
So you're talking about two different things. You're talking, you, you said you wanted to keep the levy rate flat, what you wanted to keep was the dollars.
No, no, no. What I'm looking at is less than $600,000 up there, but we're increasing our budget by almost 1 point.
Right, but the dollar amount and the levy amount are two totally different things. You have, we have no control really over the levy. We have control of the dollars.
Uh-huh, but, but how do we levy 29 million, 785 versus 28 million, 576 and not show that we have a considerable amount there, a 1.2 million increase? So where is the other 600,000?
Well, we, I mean, we also added, these are all the additional items. There's 350 that we had added during budget development. We also have capital that was added to that also.
I would, I would think that if we were like most people who do budgets, we would look at our income and we'd say, okay, where can we pare back? Where can we pare back?
Right, and the personnel isn't included in here, like the increase, the step moves, the medical insurance, so that's where some of that cost is going to come from also.
So we've done some cuts, you know, in some other areas. I mean, we know 1.166,000, I think, we freed up in this budget. And I know where we, we've made some strides towards some new advancements, but to not, I don't remember getting this since we kind of finalized it.
I thought that I emailed it out to everybody.
This has been emailed to everybody since we finalized, since we finalized it. The difference was is we didn't have the actual numbers from the county.
The valuation.
The valuation from the county.
This has been the same since June 14th.
Okay, so...
So now, this, we planned this and got that gap remaining with the 3% on that, with the 3% increase, with knowing that we would maybe come back here if it were the total 3%. We know it's only a 6.1, or 1.67%.
I just, you know, I would go through and $500,000, and I really think that it probably is more like 488,000, what's 12,000? But I think we could do it if we were willing to work at it and really say these are our priorities.
So Councilwoman Adamson has asked you, what are your, what do you want to cut here? What, what do you want to cut? I think the rest of the council is comfortable where we are.
Are you guys all, if you're all comfortable, then it's a discussion.
Well, not necessarily, you, you...
I'm excited that we got to this point. This, to me, says we are a progressive community and we're taking care of our people. And we need to take care of our people. Those extra patrolmen and people like that are going to make our community stronger because we're going to be able to provide a service that right now is probably struggling, you know, because we're asking so much of our people. I am excited that we're able to do those things and not spend more money than that 1.6%.
I just, I look at the United Way Alice Report, and it's revision, and this is done by a wide, wide range of accountants. They're, they're good at their, what they do, and they showed that our income-constrained population grew by 6% over a few years.
I really need to look at that Alice Report with greater detail because I disagree with it.
44% of our people are income-constrained and...
I don't believe that.
I have, I have...
You need to go walk in certain parts of our town, and you would...
I've been there. I go in them every day.
With, with that, though, I have spoke with the Department of Labor to ask them, look, are we, am I just blind? Am I not seeing, where does this come from? And they don't know where the Alice Report comes from. They don't know how they get those numbers. They know that they, if they don't hit one number, they add to it to find, to get to the other number. They don't know what, you know, when you say their financial restraint, they don't know if that means their, what number they're using for the poverty level, they don't know that stuff.
Well, there's a given in there that shows the poverty. There's another level that shows people who are income-constrained and employed because of the low wages, because of what it takes for childcare, for what it takes for rent, and stuff like that. It is a pretty comprehensive report. And, you know, we can say, I disagree with it, but I see people every day that are struggling. I, I work with agencies all the time where their load has increased, well, we say we have a prospering community, and their load has increased, and they're dealing more and more. We heard Aid for French just a little while ago tell us that they're having more families than they've ever had as part of their homeless population.
So I can't disagree with any of those things you said. I can tell you that when you speak with the Department of Labor, they will tell you a different story. They will tell you wages have increased, they will tell you there are more jobs and better jobs available today than there are people to work those jobs. They recognize that there are some underemployed, but they will tell you, and they will show you exactly where they get those numbers and how those, those wages and everything has increased. And so, I mean, we could spend all day long arguing one way or another.
But our per capita income in our area has not kept up with the states, and it has not kept up with the nations, and so our people, while we are employed and doing everything, it's in this, it's in this small controlled area. If you go back historically, Pocatello and Vannick County has really fallen in per capita income.
So I think we could argue about Alice Report versus Department of Labor. I mean, we, we're not the ones that create those reports, so we can't really, we don't control what is on those necessarily, but what we can control is what we're looking at here. So I don't see anything necessarily to cut from here. I'm not opposed to, if you have some idea of somewhere else, talking it through. I mean, I don't really want to have less street maintenance and have more potholes and cut there. I mean, I use the library, I know a lot of people do, we just heard the statistics. So, but what, what departments are you, like, where do we need to look?
We need to eat more pizza to tell them where the potholes are, according to that commercial, right?
Okay, but, but seriously, like, where, where should we look if we need to do something? That's what I wanted to know.
Well, when we get to this point, we're, we're managing against departments. If, if I were to go through this, I would, I would say, okay, police department doesn't get everything. We got 1, 2, 3, 4, 4 things there in the police department alone. Okay? If I were to go through this, I would go down and look at some of the, drop it down a little, please.
So you basically have to cut all of it, but maybe 1%.
Well, but there's other facets to the budget, it's not just there.
Yeah, so we added, um, these are other things that we added.
So we, I'd go back and say capital contingency, what was the capital contingency? We took 115,000 off.
The, we moved that to the Ross Park project, the resurfacing. So it, it's a wash, it just moved down to a different section.
So we, what we budgeted, 1,000, 1,751,000 capital contingency, right? So we could say, we can dissolve capital contingency by $200,000. Right? We could do that.
Yeah, you could do that.
I mean, we're not just looking at the right column, we look at the left column too. And I, I just think we could go through there and we could find 400, 500,000. I, I found 200 to say this, this lower capital contingency.
But don't we have to then say specifically which projects? Because, I mean, all of that was a total that was added for specific things, so we, if you're cutting capital contingency...
Most of it's not...
It's, um, so we have 1.6 that is council, has to be council-approved, just like we did for this fiscal year. They want people, departments will have to come to you and request to use that capital contingency. I can tell you that the balance, we did the same amount for fiscal year '18, it's almost all gone.
That's, I'm remembering the process when we were looking at the projects...
Right.
That people wanted to do, there were many things that we said, we can do that with capital contingency, we can do that with capital...
Right.
So we would have to go back and look at all of those and say, which are the ones we're not going to do.
And how much do we carry, are we carrying right now in capital contingency?
We have about 200,000.
That's it?
Left, yeah. And that's, that's for FY '18 plus what was left over for '17. The, I mean, we've used most of it on things that were really needed to get done, so...
That was the intent of that capital contingency. That's where the, the council has really spent some time making sure that we held on to that as long as we could in case there was an emergency that we needed to take care of, and then start taking care of the deferred maintenance that we've refused to do for decades here in the city.
The capital issue.
And, and so we can, we can take and cut that capital, fix your concern today, but put off deferred maintenance.
200,000, that's what people do when they, when they have kids with braces and a roof that needs replaced and...
I get that.
And all these things, they make choices.
No, I get that, but eventually you have to, the choice that you have to make is...
Eventually, one priority fades and another one...
Eventually, you have to make the choice of, I'm sorry, I know my kid needs braces, but our house's roof is falling in, and I've got to pay for that roof. And so really, truly, this is what we're doing right now.
We could cut 200,000.
What you're doing right now is, is you're saying we're going to leave and not do some maintenance that we may or may not need.
It's not even spoken for yet, Brian.
That's right.
So if we cut 200,000 out of capital contingency, what, how will that affect our levy rate?
Take another 1%.
Yeah, it would be a 0.98.
Does that feel better?
I think it's a move in the right direction. I just, I just think we got to do the heavy lifting, and we got to look at all this stuff because we haven't looked at it with the backdrop of what our income is. We haven't done that. And I think people expect us to sit here and say, hey, we're going to weigh our expenses now against what we know our income is, not something that we project, not something we, we're going to pull out of the air. This is what we know our income will be, based on what our valuations are. And if, you said, for example, that you thought houses had gone up 11% at one time?
I did not say that. The housing in Pocatello, the actual valuation, has gone up, but we, we're kind of behind in terms of what the county's going to be doing. We'll get the benefit of this year's great growth next year.
Okay. Because when I look at what houses are assessed at versus what, and I had a different reason than city council, the defense, if I started looking, they're 20, 25% below what's being asked. And the state says we're supposed to be assessed at the full value.
If the county did that, there'd be some wholesale rebound.
Well, I know, but the state has, there's a law that says it's supposed to be appraised value as market value.
Every five years.
Yeah, so anyway. Okay, well, just go back to other places. I'm being asked to make all this recommendation. Go back to the employee part.
I think we, we're having some...
What are we doing?
Let's include the rest of the everybody.
What are we doing here?
Well, the question was, what do we do with the capital contingency? And maybe you want to...
Well, it makes me nervous cutting that, leaving that fund potentially short. We've got huge projects like Northgate going on that we might find some unanticipated expenses in and not be able to make them happen.
Well...
Good observation, Rick.
And I agree with that, but, you know, Northgate is supposed to be an investment-funded project. It's not a Pocatello-funded project. We funded, what we were called upon to fund in terms of getting the connector on the, on the map. We came up with about $5 million, I believe.
I think maybe his concern is what happens when that development comes, because we are responsible to provide services to that area.
Well, but I, I think that they ought to, my own, my own belief is they need to come with enough capitalization that we know we can provide services.
Well, I'm talking about maybe an extra sanitation truck. We may need to do other things to provide services out there that won't be investor-funded.
But if they come, and I've said this from the beginning, I'm all for development, but Hoku was funded by Wall Street, and was vetted by Wall Street, and they have 500-some million dollars behind them. I haven't, and we'll, we'll find out next week in a meeting, but I haven't seen any real big investment. I, you know, we, we hear somebody's coming in and stuff like that, but until somebody goes out there and buys a whole bunch of property and says, we're moving here, and there's some announcement, you know, I don't know how we, how we can expand out there given the range that we have to provide fire and police and sanitation and all of that infrastructure. They've got to capitalize it themselves somehow with their investment too. It can't all be on us. And part of that capitalization should provide us a tax base that helps service that at some point. That's my position.
I think communities that have great facilities and great infrastructure are the ones that companies are interested in. And I think we have to make sure that we are on the map with good things in order for people outside the area to be attracted to come in here. So I, I think we're doing the right thing with the anticipation of not only staying current, but to me, these things are saying we're growing and we're doing everything we can to... to keep good personnel and good equipment and good roads and good infrastructure. I think this is telling us we're going in the right direction.
I was talking to a person that became very aware of one of the persons that owns business, and they said that they have to be at 100% full all the time, or the property taxes will put them out of business. That's the other side of it. We've got, you know, and we can look at what is good, but we also have to have a realist look at what, we've got people struggling, their buildings have been empty for years.
The only way we're going to really change this is if we change our tax base, and I think that will happen as things become increasingly more exciting in Pocatello. Just as Gloria was talking about all the things that are happening in downtown, that's programming, that's people working to make things happen there. That activity in Old Town is not just happening by accident, it's happening because the people downtown want it to be better.
What happens to the numbers if we compromise? I mean, if you want to take out the 200,000, but that makes us a little bit nervous. What happens if we take out 100,000? Where does that put our levy rate?
Remember, whenever you increase a levy rate, you're increasing part of the formula of taxation, because the taxes also go up every time the property value comes up. So if you, let's say, an 8% valuation increase, that's an 8% raise in your taxes right there, in addition to the levy rate. It's a, it's a complex formula. And we're getting poised, we're going to see people getting some large increases. I've talked to people who've got 8% and 10% increases after they were in their houses. So, the 1.32 is on top of what these other valuation increases are.
So what worries me about us focusing on the levy rate, that's the wrong place to be focusing on. And I understand that you don't want it to be too high and all of that stuff, but we are one of, what, seven taxing entities that is affected with that rate. So we can cut this, we can drop everything, we can hold everybody straight, we could drop back to the 2008 levy that you, that you talked about, and the other six could increase it and that would still go up.
That's true, but we're supposed to control what we can control.
And so, but when you do that, you're also putting the deferred maintenance back. I think you're looking at the wrong numbers. Boise, for example, in ordinance, every year, automatically in ordinance takes 3%. There's no question, there's not, that's in order to grow and in order to stay up with what they needed to and what they need to, automatically, the mayor and council decided we will absolutely, it won't be a discussion, immediately take the 3%. And, and so, they know whatever that 3% they're taking, even if it comes back to 1.67, they take the 3%, because they're progressing and they're taking care of what they need to. When you look at the other areas, that's exactly what's happening. And if you want to see that grow, you have to take care of your infrastructure, you have to take care of your, your facilities, you have to take care of your parks, you have to have police and fire in there. I don't think, I disagree wholeheartedly. I think we've put a good budget together, I wouldn't, I wouldn't cut anything. We're coming in lower than what we thought. If we were looking at the 3%, I would personally be a little bit iffy and go, you know what, maybe we need to look at something. We're coming in below the CPI. I think we've got a good budget.
But you can't just look at this relative to CPI.
And I'm not.
Part of the 63,473,000 in the assessed value are people that's had their property reassessed and they got an increase. That's part of it. Because the new construction was 24 million, so the rest of it was property valuation rising.
But, okay, take me back to the, where'd you come up with 63 million dollars of taxes that were taken or whatever it is? What am I...
The valuations.
Okay.
We went from 2.5 billion to 2.15, to 2.579.
But it's also intended growth with Amy's Kitchen, with Caterpillar, with Gray Western Maltean, with the Zip Kit Homes. The growth that we've seen, the reason we have more employment opportunities today than we had, than we have employees, is part of that 60 million dollar increase as well. The hospitals increased, the Bingham has come down and built buildings and stuff, you've got more activities happening.
But, new construction was at one level, that's the new standard. The, and the growth in the other part of the assessment is mainly the inflation rate that drives valuations. And the inflation rate in homes and businesses and stuff is pretty hot. It's not following CPI. If we're growing community, you far exceed your house valuations increasing. That's why the rest of the state has seen fit to have rapid, rapid increases in homeowners' exemption, and we really took a hit on that, because our average house is worth 139,000 per median. You've listed up to...
133,000.
133,000. So if, if Boise's average house or median house is 200-some thousand, to address it, they kept moving up. And we took people getting a greater part of their house reduced, because it's a statewide thing. It's a complex thing, but it takes more than sitting here just today, looking at expenses versus income, to be able to hash this out.
Well, I felt that we looked at things fairly thoroughly as we've gone through this process. I was almost giddy in 2012 when we took that drop. I just thought, man, that's going in the right direction. But then I saw what was happening in terms of the negative impact on other aspects of our city. And I, I do not apologize at all for our investing, which I look at this expenditure, I look at it as investing in the entire community. We, we have a lot of people who are prospering, we may have some that we need to work a little harder with, but when our unemployment is so low, I think we're in the right, going in the right direction, and we've got to invest, and this looks to me to be good investment.
I'm personally very, very comfortable with it, in fact, I think it's a great budget. We've worked hard, and I, I think it's a good budget, personally.
I felt more comfortable going through this process, Mr. Mayor, than any other year that we've had, so I feel good also.
And I think the requests that are coming from the departments are quite reasonable. And I think, looking at all of that, and looking, and I understand your concern with the levy rate, but we're going to be a proactive, I think we're being proactive by preparing and providing the service. If people and citizens know that they're safer because there's more fire personnel, they're safer because there's more police available, I don't think people are going to complain, I mean, there's always complainers, but the fact that the quality of life, if that gets better, I think we're in the right direction. And we did, although, we did number them last time, just in case we came up, we'd take out some stuff, but we did.
And I think our departments have done very well. John Banks made a presentation at my Rotary Club the other day and talked in terms of the percentage of the things in the Parks Department that people pay for. Was it 70-some percent, John? Our people are paying the majority of the cost of maintaining programs like the Parks.
Well, I'm the lone voice up here, so it's whatever you guys decide, I'm just not comfortable.
Want to move it? We need to move forward.
If we had adjusted it with 200,000 off of the capital contingency, would that make you comfortable with it? Would you then be voting for it, or would you still be against?
I think it'd be a start. I would, I would say, okay, this take out, you know, we got to prioritize 1 through 12. What happens if we took out 12 through 7? There's another 100,000 right there. And we prioritize that, knowing that this could be part of our discussion. So there we'd be, two-thirds or three-fifths of the way towards 500,000. But I'm the lone voice.
I'll tell you, council, I personally think we've done a great job. I think that we're coming in lower than we thought we would. If the council wanted to move it and adjust it, then I would be okay with that, but I don't agree with it. I think that in order to continue to improve what we're doing, we're going to need to. Any of these we take out, we're going to have back next year, and the year after that, and the year after that, and eventually, we're going to have to do that.
We've got some things that have been on here since I've been on council.
That's right.
I think we've taken the time, step by step, through this budget process, to look at each one of those requests and prioritize them. They all pastor a muster at that time, and I can't see reason to change their mind now.
The only thing in terms of the total budget that I'm concerned about is where we have taken video services out. I would like to put that back in.
I agree with you.
That was going to be my next question after we got this solved, because you always want to throw a wrench in the middle of things. But we had testimony from quite a few people, I think seven or eight, and the only thing I heard last week was video services and their concerns with the League of Women Voters and some stuff.
I want some clarification on that, because all the test, what we talked about was getting rid of, if, to use that language, community access television. We talked about that we would keep government access and we would keep some of education access. So I think there is, to my understanding, a misunderstanding of what we were actually talking about eliminating. So, am I wrong about that? I mean, what are we, how are we going to do the government access and the education access? How are those going to be offered? I mean, we're not talking about eliminating all of video services. And then where does, for example, League of Women Voters has the forums, the candidate forums? And right now, those, I think, are shown live on community access. Could those be covered under government access? I mean, these are questions that I have, I just want to clarify, what exactly are we talking about eliminating? Because it was more of a restructuring than a complete elimination.
Right. So we're keeping public information officer, moving to the mayor's office with an operating budget 17,000 about. So we moved over 102,000 over to the mayor's office. IT was taking on a production specialist full-time, plus operating of about 16,000, so that was increasing about 90,000. So we had an overall savings of 171,425.
And I understand those numbers, but what does that mean in terms of the actual services that we're offering? So, how are these government access programs that we're still going to keep, going to be accessed by people? How are they, are we live streaming? Are we, you know, what are we doing on the...
Linda, I think one of the greatest things that's happening, and Logan needs to come up and help us, but I think there's been some brilliant ideas suggested in terms of what we can do to be better in this area. Haven't there been some great discussions, Logan?
As far as...
As what we can do to make our community access still available, but maybe using some funds from other places, maybe doing some relocating. What are some of the things you've heard?
Logan McDougall, Public Information Officer and Video Services Director. I've heard there's been an idea of a 501(c)(3) nonprofit taking over community access, that is as far as it has gotten. I don't know of a specific one or anyone, then there hasn't been anyone who's come to me and expressed their interest in taking it over.
Can I just add to that, that I have also heard that, but I've heard that they are looking to create a 501(c)(3) right now to take it over.
That'll take a year.
There's not one available, so it will take a year to make that happen.
And they're also talking about the possibility of not just taking over community access, but taking over education access, or at least some of it, too. But that all has to be set up. I mean, that is a definite possibility if there's a group in the community that want to take over those services, but that will take time. So what happens in the meantime, then? Yeah.
We carry on.
To address your question about the League of Women Voters, Pocatello Community Media sponsors that with them, and it's been aired on the government access channel.
It's been...
Aired on the government access channel.
It has been, okay.
It may have, at one point, been on the community access channel, but it is a Pocatello Community Media production, so...
So, the changes that we talked about making, I mean, unless we change that back, but the way that we had talked about changing it, the League of Women Voters forums would still then be shown?
There's still a possibility, you know, question of staffing and that sort of stuff, but, yeah, that is possible.
But that could still be included under the government access that we were saying we would not...
Correct.
...get rid of. Because to me, a lot of the concerns that were addressed in the testimony were about transparency and, you know, inclusion in the democratic process and, you know, those things, which we all care about, but we're not talking about...
We'll still have...
Getting rid of any of that.
Well, that was, that was one. The other one was the...
The fitness program.
The fitness program.
Reading program.
There was, I think, one or two comments about the fitness. The majority seemed to be about the issue of, you know, allowing citizens to participate in our democracy and being transparent, having government transparency seemed to be the major concerns. My impression.
I thought it was just opposite of that, but maybe I wasn't, maybe my notes were wrong.
To my estimation, it was mainly Women's League of Voters.
Yes, yeah.
And the fitness. Expanding beyond the concept of their programs being viewed, but also the fact of transparency on the government access and...
And still being able to watch.
And allowing citizen engagement for the people who can't come to meetings or come to the forums, or, that that was the main concern. That was my perception.
And the fitness was an aspect of it by two people.
I think the other concern that was addressed when we first were talking about it was just the real estate in City Hall, as far as having the studio available for anyone who wants to come in and do a community access program, that we have, you know, real estate is at a premium, and we have other areas that are growing that maybe could use that space. So, if we're talking about not making any changes to video services, then are we talking about keeping the space the same?
So I think that if you leave it all the same, then you just postpone the expansion of stuff to, for a year. I think it's reasonable, if we have a not-for-profit group or people looking to develop a not-for-profit group, to give them a year's opportunity to do so, and then hand it over. I think that's a reasonable request.
But it costs us 173,000 to do that.
170,000.
Which it just says 173.
171.
171.
I think that we've been moving in this direction for a long time. We've had discussions over three years on this, and I think it's time to pull the lever and say, this is a change, we're not doing away with all aspects of it, we're just containing it to government access, full transparency of the cap... We're just containing it to government access, full transparency of the council and their actions. I think that we've made that decision. You know I'm not ready to raise the budget another 171,000.
We can't.
Yeah, we can't. We couldn't if we were ready to.
We would have to cut something else to bring it back.
Or use capital.
Right.
We had a suggestion to cut $200,000 of capital. You could keep that the same and put that into the...
Yes, correct.
And use that.
Can I ask one more question? And this is maybe seemingly a little off-topic, but I think in the big picture, it could have an effect, too. I was having a discussion with a community member about video services and just all the old programming that we have. And maybe, you know, many, those shows might be on older technology or something. And we heard earlier with the library about digitizing older, you know, like the newspapers. Are we currently, or do we have any plans of saving, I mean, those programs are part of our history. Are we going to be digitizing any of those to save them as part of our historical record?
We went through and digitized a lot of our playback programs that are in rotation right now. We've got a wall back there full of DVDs. I'm not sure exactly how many of those have been converted into, you know, video files. But it's something that could be done. The other question would be technol, would be, you know, hard drive space.
Right. The reason why I'm asking is, again, if we were to eliminate that space, where does all that stuff go? Or do we have somewhere that we would store it?
We could probably find a space, maybe the library, maybe the Bannock County Historical Museum. I'm just throwing out places.
Yeah, and in fact, in the discussion I had, we were talking about the possibility of moving those records into library, you know, archives or something like that. But it was an interesting question. We have a lot of records, you know, tapes of things, so where do those go if we eliminate that space? Because we don't want to just lose all of that record.
We could probably, excuse me, we could probably find a home for it.
Well, Mayor, I don't know if, are we doing action item this or not, if we're supposed to have motions or not? But I would say, I would be in favor of having Ashley proceed with preparing an ordinance based on the numbers that she has originally presented to us without any, I know we've talked about a lot of different things, but I think that 1.0, what is it, 1.67 is what it was. I think that's a good number. It's under the CPI. We've all gone through, I mean, we're hashing out a lot of things that we've already hashed out before and talked about. So I would be in favor with having the finance department prepare that ordinance.
I agree with Heidi. It's a good idea.
Move forward, preparing the ordinance, I mean, back out of this is an action item it is, so we can do that.
I think Jared said he wanted.
Yeah. In fact, he said, I gotta have that. So prepare with the numbers, prepare the ordinance the way, with as numbers that we've presented and talked about and everything. What about video services? Are we not interested in that?
Because we can't add that in with the existing, we'd have to cut something else.
If we had that back, then we have to find 170-something.
171.
171.
So I think we should just go with what we've got.
I kind of disagree. As much as I want to see the transition towards, you know, digital and all of the more modern idea of video services, I think, considering everybody that came in, plus, you know, the comments we received, it may not seem a lot, but more than any other issue, we've heard a lot of uproar about the video services. And I think it's a good...
So actually, it's probably because you're new, but we have received a lot more emails from people like wanting billboards to go, I mean, really, a lot of other issues, even in the short time that I've been on the council, that this was not very much feedback compared to a lot of other issues that have come before us. And especially since the majority of those people that were in here were from the League of Women Voters, and it sounds like that is going to be addressed. They're still going to have that option, and people that were concerned about transparency in our meetings. So really, it's just the one or two people who wanted the fitness program, and I still believe they can go on YouTube and get a fitness program that they could still watch from the comfort of their home.
Yeah, my concern was that a lot of the testimony was based on a misunderstanding that we were not going to be recording or showing those programs, you know, our meetings or the League of Women Voters forums, that all of that was going to be cut. And as far as I understood, that was not our intention at all.
And I think some people had a misunderstanding also about Idaho Public Television, not what the city's doing, but I think people just were confused a little bit about what exactly it was.
And then what about the graduation ceremonies and things like that? I mean, is the school board going to do that? Or are we, because right now, we're providing those services, correct?
Yeah, they paid up through October 1 of this year. They haven't paid for next year.
I do like the idea, I mean, I've heard from several people in the community, the idea of a nonprofit being set up to take over community and at least some of the education access TV. And I like that idea, but I do understand that would take time to get that set up. And one of the things that I've heard regarding that is that they would also need to have at least some of the equipment that we would then no longer be using in order to make that feasible. Is that something, I mean, whether we proceed with what we originally planned for video services or whether we don't today, if that nonprofit goes forward, is that a possibility that we could work with them on transitioning and letting them take over some of the equipment that the city has?
I would think that that would be the intent, would be the equipment that they need, that would be part of us helping them get that nonprofit up and running and going and stuff.
So that cooperation could...
I believe it could, but there again, if you, if you cut it off today, that equipment's going to be surplus.
Right, where does it go?
It will be surplus, it will be put in a storage, it will be surplus and auctioned off next May and be gone. And then you lose that opportunity. I think if there's a desire for a, to allow time for that nonprofit, I think that you're going to need to keep video services at least for a year.
To give that time.
I don't know how long it takes, how long does it take to set up a...
Takes a year.
Takes a year, a summer year.
The IRS is examining those very closely.
Safe estimate's about a year.
The safe, that's about a year. I mean, you're protecting it.
I think we leave video services as is for a year for the community on notice in the 2020 budget.
And I would agree with that. I think that's a...
That gives us time to do something.
I think I would agree with that. Leave video services for a year and then put people on notice that says, you're, we're doing away with it in 2020, and that gives you time and should give you the motivation to do that.
How will they get it done in a year? We've been talking about this since January, and now then there's just an idea coming up.
And I've never even heard that until today, like, I've never heard about this 501(c)(3) until right now.
Because I don't think people, there again, we can, we can talk about all the numbers and all of that stuff. I don't think people are that interested until, with everything, until it's something that they use all the time. I think that the people, the general feel in the community is the city council has done a great job with the budget, a great job keeping things where they need to be and affordable and taking care of the community. And then I think you just found, people just found out that, you know what, video services is going away? We may have been talking about it, but you don't have the...
But people were not aware.
People paying attention to that communication like they should have been until...
The Journal wrote it on it.
The Journal wrote a paper on it and said, hey, it's going away.
If, if we go with this suggestion of keeping video services the way it is for another year, and then say at the end of that year, you know, that's it, and giving that time, then where are we coming up with that 170?
We have to come out of the capital contingency, which everybody just said they thought it was a bad idea to reduce.
Yeah.
But it has to come from somewhere, so is that where we want it to come from?
Yeah.
That's the only place you really could take it from.
So it's really not that essential for the moving forward of the city is to preserve what we've done in the past. That's what you're saying, if you go get that money after the arguments you presented.
We have to look at what are, what are the services that are most important for the city to provide? And I think we all agree, it's police, fire, we want streets that are maintained. I mean, these are the services that most people are like, I have to have that. I know.
Right. I think the public service, I think it's fair to have a transition period, and also that this falls into the arts, and it falls into communication, it falls into, you know, lifestyle for some people. And it's an opportunity, you know, there's a lot of benefits to having public service channels. It's, you know, it's an open platform for community members to come utilize and make their own shows where they might not have access to otherwise. I think for the time being, we're okay until we figure out an alternative. I don't think we need to...
Well, we did, we had that conversation, and we figured out the alternative, which was to have our...
What is the alternative?
Well, we're still going to have the things that are important to the majority of citizens, like the recording of our meetings and those types of things. But for the very, very small amount of people that utilize the other additional programming, and they don't even have cable TV anymore, most of them, they have satellite and they can't even access it.
I think the people that are concerned do have cable TV, Heidi.
Okay, a few people do.
I think those that are concerned about video services are people who are watching on cable television. Everybody hasn't given up cable TV.
About 20% a year, we heard, are getting rid of cable.
Not quite that big.
Well, that's what we heard.
What we heard last...
There's a 20% reduction in revenue, which ought to equate to 20% reduction in customers.
Logan?
So I was just told that the 501(c)(3) will be set up in two weeks by an Anna Spencer. Funding for it would be in a year. The board of directors has...
They may apply in two weeks, but it takes a year for the IRS to grant that status.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with 501(c)(3).
But that would be fine, we could still work with them if they get that set up to, you know, whatever assistance we could give them at that time. But I don't think we need to prolong it on the chance that it goes through.
Yeah, if it doesn't till, then we spend $170,000 for nothing.
Well, I think the very people that you were concerned with, with the tax, the levy limit going up and stuff, are the very people that are watching that and dependent on the video services to be...
They're the people that go in and pay their taxes. They're not the people watching television.
The ones you're talking about are the ones that are at home, they can't get out, they can't go to the gym to work out.
Those are two different things. The ones I'm talking about are the people that can't even afford cable TV, okay? They're the people that can't afford meals. We've got kids, 9% or 15% of our kids in our town go to bed food deprived every night. Those are the people I'm talking about. They don't even think about cable television.
Which is also a number that's dropped over the last few years from down to that 9%. So we're going in the right direction.
I'm not saying 9 to...
So what I'm saying is, is you have a large majority of the people that are interested in this, that are on cable TV, that are older, that need some of those programs to help them get up and move.
I think that it's such a reduced audience.
Can I ask a question of our engineering department? Come on down. What I'm interested to know, we heard from a couple of people who still want to watch shows on cable TV, but I think we also need to factor in what impact if we keep the studio there, is that going to have on the remodel issues? And since we know we're projecting growth in the city, how, I mean, are we going to be able to, with that remodel, provide better services to the citizens and be better equipped for the growth that's coming? Or what, what do we need to consider in that regard?
Jeff Mansfield, Public Works Director and City Engineer. So, yeah, ideally, you know, we were, we were looking at that space to utilize for a reconfiguration of planning and engineering and then help to make our departments more effective and more to be able to provide a better service for the, for the public and also for our employees. And so if that space is not available, then, you know, we'd have to, you know, do something different or maintain things status quo the way that they are.
And I feel like if we're trying to be proactive and be prepared for the growth, we need to be taking a step in that direction now, rather than waiting until, oh, it's so busy, and now we're throwing that into the mix. That's...
And I'm still concerned about, you know, where we get the 170,000. I guess the only option is capital contingency. When we looked at the other part and saying, you know, cut 7 through 12 or whatever, that I'm not comfortable with at all. That's getting into the personnel that we talked about at length that is very needed. And those are, I mean, that's really catching up. We're behind in most of our departments in terms of personnel. So just to say 7 through 12 gets us 100-something thousand, but when we actually look at what that means, which positions 7 through 12 are, you know, what those are, that's something I'm not comfortable with. So to me, that 100,000, we need to not consider. So then that means the capital contingency, which was 200, so we'd be left with 30,000 roughly.
And we would hate to be in a position next year where something important comes up and we're like, well, we just don't have any money left in our capital contingency. I mean, that would not be good.
That is what we were just saying.
I don't disagree with that, and I would be in some cruel, but if we were to add that back in, I'm giving you the option that that's where you would add it back into, and you wouldn't have the, that 171,000 of capital contingency. You would just, you would take it, and that's where it would be. And so I, I am, I do understand and I do agree that, yeah, you're walking away from $200,000, and I just made the argument that you got to have it in case of. I get that, but this might be the in case of.
I don't, I don't see it being in case of. We made a decision as a council to formulate the budget, and while you were saying that we prioritize these 1 through 12 as a way of being able to step back and to take stuff away, should we decide to. That's why the whole purpose of prioritizing is because it was a descending order of priority. We had others we wouldn't even consider. If you put video services, which we've already declared as a non-essential service, based on declining revenue, the trend line in terms of our reimbursement, we decided we had other services that were more important to use that money, you're reopening the whole budget where you wouldn't do it a minute ago. You wouldn't do it for poor people, but you'll do it for people that want to...
No, 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 I'm not going to let that fly. You won't do it for poor people. That is absolutely one of the most ridiculous comment you made all day long. That is not the case. The case is, I'm making an argument for the people that can't get out and do it. They have to have it. That's the case I'm doing.
171,000 more than you were willing to cut.
That is ridiculous.
You're spending 171,000 that you weren't willing to cut.
Well, no, I agree with that, and I just told you I'd hope, I would hope to it, but to throw out you don't care about poor people is bullshit. I'm sorry, Rob.
Okay, I would like to remake my motion that we proceed with the numbers that Ashley has given us earlier today, and that we go with the budget as it was presented by Ashley. I think that's, I think that's good. We've all worked hard on it. We've been through the issues. I think it's important for us to be prepared for things that are coming up and the growth in the future, and I think that we've done a good job of looking at what is essential, and I would like to proceed with that.
Counsel, my woman, Nan, are you still?
Yes, yes, I agree with Heidi, yes.
So, yeah, do a roll call.
Adamson?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Ray?
No.
Gina?
No.
Laura?
Yes.
Johnston?
Oh, is he still here?
Yes.
Yes.
Did I say Menon?
Yes.
It's 42.
42.
Is it 42?
Yeah, 42.
So 42 for what? What are we doing?
Preparing the ordinance as presented by Ashley.
Okay. Okay, then prepare it as presented.
I guess I would ask another thing about the fee resolution. Should we prepare that also?
Yes.
I've got one point. The Great Western discount of 40% costs us a considerable amount of money. When we voted every year, we're participating in that decision. We have heard time and time again that our rate studies are broken. If we're going to give a 25 or 50% reduction to somebody, yet we can give, I can't do the number real fast, but a million times, what, $3? I got to do it. I can't do it. But I'm going to say it's $500,000 or more a year reduction. If that doesn't break our rate study, I don't know what it is, what does. So I can't vote for the rate study or the resolution on fees with that one item in there.
I'm saying prepare the rate study the way it was and let everybody vote the way it was. That would be my opinion. There again, it's another thing we're rehashing that you've agreed with before that has been on the floor.
I have not agreed with the.
It was, you voted for it.
But I haven't, I haven't.
You voted for it and then you've changed your mind on it.
I haven't voted for it, Brian.
That facilitated a $100 million investment. It facilitates $380 million impact into our community and that's a good deal. And so unless the rest of the council disagrees with preparing it that way, then I would say you prepare it that way.
My move, we prepare the rate study as presented.
Second.
So you have a motion in a second. Ruth, would you call her out, please?
You guys caught me by surprise.
That's a shock.
Curst by Johnston?
Yes.
Second by Gina?
Or Adamson.
Or Adamson.
You can have, no, you can, we can, he can have it.
Well, thank you.
And the motion is to.
To prepare the rate study.
The fee resolution.
Resolution. Yeah, the fee resolution.
Resolution, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's what I thought you were talking about.
It is. I just need help.
Okay, thank you. Johnston?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ray?
No.
Laura?
Yes.
Menon?
Yes.
Okay, so you've got the direction of what we're doing?
Yes.
How we're doing it?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else that we need to hash out? I think we've got it. Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, can I make one comment?
I'm sorry, no, no. You had the opportunity. We voted, we've done all that stuff. Now all of a sudden you want to speak? You've been hiding back there all meeting long.
I just want to put out the offer that if the equipment from video services, if you need someplace to store that, until the 503(c)(3) gets established, we could find some space to store that equipment if you wanted to hang onto it as a surplus.
I think we should.
We'll, we'll do that. You got until May anyway.
Right. So, okay.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Ashley. Thank you, Logan and Jeff. And thank you, everybody, the staff for being here in the city council.
Yes.
I think the chief needs to talk about this national night out and the vests that were donated. I just think that was such a great thing for our dogs. Officer Shai, somebody.
Roger was there.
Who was on the spot? This is Mayor and Council, Scott Marshand, Chief of Police, Deputy Chief Roger Shai. Roger was, was able to go to the national night out last night where the vests were donated. So I'll let him talk to you about that real quick.
Sure, that was a great event. And what that is, is that's a national group. And the group that was there is from, is from Idaho. And they have donated vests to several different law enforcement agencies. Those vests, approximately $1,500 apiece. So that's a great thing for our budget. It's something that's donated to the K-9 officers. And it's something that could prevent the death of a K-9 officer, which we've had here in Bannock County several years ago, back in 19, I believe it was 1994, where Deputy Thomas's dog was shot and killed in the line of duty. And recently, one year ago, Jardo over in Boise was, was shot and killed in the line of duty. And if you would have had a vest, that could have prevented that. So that was something that we greatly appreciated. And it's, it's community outreach like that that makes our community great and makes our department great. So those, those are things that help fund those programs.
Four, is that right?
They gave us one. Yeah, and we have four K-9s. So now they all have one. So, and, and the whole idea behind what this group is, is it was an eight-year-old boy who had died, who he would go out and raise money for those vests when he was alive. And so they've kind of carried out his, his dream. So pretty humbling.
It would have been more community members at that event.
Well, the K-9s, the K-9s are big for us. I mean, they're a huge tool for us to use on the road and at night. But we put on a lot of demonstrations for kids in the community. So those dogs are more than just a tool. They, they're an outreach for us to get us into, into different groups and, and have those connections with people.
It's, it's great to have that equipment because if we're sending the dog in, in someplace that may be a little too dangerous to send an officer in, that the K-9 has the equipment now to, if he is shot at, which does happen, that the K-9 could survive. So thank you.
That's great. That's fantastic. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, council, for your work today. Thank you, Ashley. And with that, we are adjourned.